Can I get your attention please? This is the New York State Department of Environment and Conservation, and we would like to thank you for coming out tonight. We just like to apologize in the beginning that we do not have a screen because we have an old projector and a slide, but we don't have a screen in that. We'd like to apologize in the beginning for being too old for this award. My name is Neil Driscoll and I'm the Regional Syracuse Officer with the Department of Environment and Conservation. The main purpose of our meeting tonight is to receive your comments on the proposed remedial action plan for the villa site. Your comments and your questions hopefully will be answered tonight as we go through the process that the Department of Environment and Conservation used, the site, the problems with the site, and the proposed remediation of the site, and why we decided or why it has been decided that this program. We want to just remind you that the written comment is something you forgot tonight or something that somebody that's not here would like to go on record about. We will accept, the Department of Environmental Conservation will accept your written comments up until December 30th, 1994. So if there's anything you would think of in the day from now or some of your neighbors or anybody, we will accept your written comment. Your questions and your written comment and the comments tonight will be included in a responsiveness assembly which will be part of the regular decision. All of the responsiveness assembly and all of the documents for this site will be available for your inspection at the full public library, Syracuse office, DDC, and the DDC headquarters in Albany. We also would like to remind you that if you have not been, if you could re- excuse me. We forgot to have a sign up list and I would like to pass it to you if you had one back. And that really is just to keep you informed of the progress so we can have you on our mailing list and contact you for any further need. We'll go through the process as I explained and the investigation, feasibility study, and try to explain to you the remedy. At the end of that, we will take questions and try to answer your questions. I now like to introduce, or just before that, I'd just like to acknowledge besides the formal program, Charles Brandon, the Regional Hazness Engineer from Syracuse, and Ron Hergens over here at the New York State Department of Health. I now would like to introduce Andrew English from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to explain the process.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out with you. We do appreciate your taking the time and effort. My name is Andrew English and I'm an engineer with the New York State DDC out of Albany. And what I'd like to do for you this evening is to orient you to the program that you'll be hearing in a few minutes and give you a quick overview of New York State's remedial program. The New York State Environmental Conservation Law directs the DDC to implement a program to investigate and clean up hazardous waste sites. One of the many tasks that we have. It is a large task. At one time there have been up to fifteen hundred different sites on our registry of inactive hazardous waste sites. There are currently somewhat less than one thousand. And the department projects that we will need to take active measures to remediate perhaps seven hundred and fifty sites across the New York State. So it is a large task that we have and the process is expensive, but we can break it down into four fairly straightforward steps. First of the four steps is to identify which sites we are concerned about. This happens by a number of different factors that define state or local government has information that will lead us to investigate the site. Feasibility report, survey, or information from local citizens that will make you aware of the site and maybe you've got a problem. The second step in the process is to do some preliminary investigations. To determine whether or not the site we're concerned about may potentially cause significant threats given how well they admire. This preliminary investigation, they encourage by doing things such as regular search initiatives with employees of a particular company or organization, doing some limited sampling out of site and so forth, but it's still a fairly small scale investigation. It provides enough information to determine whether or not there is a problem in the site. And if we feel that there is, we can actually call a remedial investigation and feasibility study. I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Sometime in this third phase of the project, while we're doing an investigation, it may become apparent that there are some straightforward steps that we can take to improve the situation. That we don't have to wait until the entire RIFS process to implement. We call these interim remedial measures. And this is something that has occurred in this particular project where there were some straightforward things that needed to be done and they were undertaken before the completion of the third phase. Once we have completed the RIFS and determined what the problem is and what the best solution is, we actually select it. We do that through this process that we're in tonight where we bring forward a proposed remedy, gather public comment on the issue, evaluate those comments, and then in the process make a decision. Once a remedy has been selected, we go through a design process so we can build it. Then we actually construct the remedy and monitor its effectiveness. The RIFS process can also be broken down into a few phases and steps. The remedial investigation tries to answer the question, what is the problem? What is the nature and extent of the contamination at a particular site? Once we have an idea on what the problem is, then we launch the feasibility study. We look at a number of different alternatives to solving the problem. We then move to a focused investigation discussion, a proposed remedial action plan that we put forward that we believe is to be the best solution to remedy the problem at the site. The formal act of selecting a remedy incorporated in the document that the DDC called a recorded decision. This is the document that guides both the design, the construction, and monitoring of the remedy at the site. Remedial investigation consists of a few main goals. As I said, we're trying to answer the question, what is the nature and extent of the problem at the site? That entails defining what contaminants we're concerned about, what chemicals have released into the environment that are causing concern, to identify which media has been contaminated. Is it just soil, groundwater, air, surface water, so forth? What media has been impacted? And then the distribution of that problem, how deep and wide it would... We then determine the risks that may be presented by the presence of that contamination in the media distributed by the different media. Try to find out, once we know that these materials are there, what is the extent to which people and the environment may be exposed and what's the chance that exposure will result in an adverse effect? There are lots of different methods for completing remedial investigation. Some of them are easy. You can go out, scoop up some soil and search it in the ground and have it analyzed. Some methods are much more difficult, having to drill hundreds of feet into the ground to obtain soil samples around other surfaces. Once we think we understand what the nature and extent of the problem is, we undertake a feasibility study to answer the question, what's the best solution to the problem? This occurs by first identifying all the applicable technologies. This is our toolbox. We have these contaminants and this media. What technology can we bring to bear to remediate that situation? There are literally hundreds of them that can be combined in all sorts of ways. What we then do is create a range of alternatives that goes all the way from doing nothing, our baseline, to a series of alternatives that will address the problem, perhaps focus on different aspects of the problem. Once we come up with this range of alternatives, if you narrow it down, and finally identify the best alternative or the most feasible alternative. That's one of these jargon words. I'd like to give you a little bit of an understanding of what we mean by feasibility. The first two criteria are listed. The remedy that we select must be protected of human health and the environment, and it must comply with the various laws and regulations that are on the books that direct us and other sound environmental laws that have to be passed. Then there's a whole series of trade-offs that we look at to compare the different alternatives with each other. Are they implementative? Can you actually do it? Does it reduce the toxicity of the contaminants, the mobility or the volume? Will it create short-term problems? How long will it take before it works? Will it work in the long run? If the cost is effective, then the focus of the safety meeting, what are the communities we're affected by? What are the concerns that the people in the community might have about implementing this alternative over one of the others? So as I said, it is a bit of an extensive process. It summarizes these four basic steps of trying to decide what's the problem, what's the best solution. And then go ahead and propose what we believe to be the best solution. Take community, comment upon it, and then make a final decision. Once that decision is made, we can move on to actually construct and operate along the remedy. That's the gist of the overall program. I hope that might help you put what you're about to hear in context. And this one was to introduce Shelley Rowe from Mount Hurdy who's going to present the results of remedial investigations.
I know you tonight. We have you somewhere over the deal that we're sending you to meet with the board. We'll start off by showing you kind of like the areas we're going to be talking about. Finally, we have the container stand over here. Right up in there is the former spill containment tank area. The water container is sweet over here, three fifty-seven. And we just pull out a little bit of this area with a parallel line here. And we just pull on number two and parallel line here. A couple activities are required to do the remedial investigation. The primary spill containment tank, there were volatile organic compounds detected in soil and groundwater samples and activation. Several soil boring were completed in the vicinity of the spill containment tank. In addition to that, twenty-nine groundwater monitoring wells were installed prior to the initiation of the remedial investigation. Groundwater sampling and groundwater flow patterns were communiated through the data collected in those monitoring wells. An interim remedial measure, which Andrew talked about earlier, was instituted in nineteen eighty-seven. Groundwater treatment system was started with three groundwater recovery wells and an airstripping unit. That went online in nineteen eighty-eight. As I mentioned before, the former spill containment tank area where the contamination was first noticed, soil boring and monitoring wells were installed initially in this area. Following that, there was some areas extending outward from there. I realize it's very difficult to see or read anything on the map, but where you can see two little lines there, that indicates a well cluster, but there was a well installed in the shallow groundwater zone, the wells in the deep groundwater zone. The groundwater treatment system involved three recovery wells, one which is located here, another one up here, and a third one up there. Remedial investigation activities included soil gas sampling. Three phases of the soil gas sampling took place over which three hundred and ninety-four samples were collected. Eighty-seven additional monitoring wells were installed during the RI, including the shallow, deep, and intermediate groundwater zones. Soil and groundwater sampling was conducted across the site, including surface water sampling as well as surface, subsurface soil sampling. The recovery well and treatment system was sampled on a regular basis, and municipal wells were sampled. In addition to that, there were two pumping tests conducted at the recovery wells, one in nineteen ninety and another one in nineteen ninety-two, following the installation of additional monitoring wells. This is another site map which shows at the end of the remedial investigation, locations where all the monitoring wells are. And it's basically what you can see where there's, even though you can't read it, these areas over in here. Pretty much a proper entire site, including some wells that were installed on the waterworks property. Municipal aquifer study was conducted based on a consent order which was issued to further delineate the aquifer from which the municipal wells will draw groundwater in order to evaluate the potential for the currently identified contamination at municipal well two to migrate to municipal well one. The municipal wells were taken offline following the detection of low levels of some of the chlorinated solvents in those wells. The pumping test was performed as part of municipal aquifer study. At the municipal wells was conducted during August nineteen ninety-two. Results of municipal aquifer study indicated that relatively low groundwater seepage velocities from the M-two, K-two area toward K-one, when both systems are operating at typical flow rates. The Oswego River acts as the constant source of recharge, providing approximately sixty percent of the water entering K-one and nearly seventy-five percent of the water entering K-two and M-two area. Approximately ten percent of the water entering K-one originates from the direction of the can plant to the southeast. And approximately twenty-five percent of the water entering the K-two, M-two area is received from the northeast, east, and southeast, which includes flow from the can plant property and the Taylor property. An evaluation of the potential contaminant sources was conducted and included additional soil, gas, soil, groundwater, and surface water sampling, magnetometer survey, tested excavations. On-site contaminant source areas which are identified through the RI, in addition to the spill containment tank area, include the northern drum storage, washing, northern drum, washing and storage area which is located north of the plant's northern parking lot. The former southern drum, washing and storage area located south of the can plant, and the underground storage tank area located below the southwestern portion of the can plant, near the plant's waste treatment facility. This is the northern parking lot area, north of that which would be the former northern drum storage area. As I mentioned before, the spill containment tank area. The UST area in the southwestern corner of the can plant, and the former southern drum storage area over here. Some activities which are required for completion of the FS were performed concurrently with the RI process. A vapor extraction pilot test was performed in the southern source area in order to assess the applicability of this remedial technology. Additional test pourings were completed in the northern drum storage area and the spill containment tank area to obtain additional soil contamination data and to evaluate the applicability of vapor extraction in this area. Following the submission of the remedial investigation report, additional work was performed. Another interim remedial measure was instituted, which is the municipal well treatment system. Consent order was executed by Miller and New York State DCE and the city of Bolton was stipulated that the results of municipal aquifer study be incorporated into the RI. Also covered with the construction of a long-term treatment system for the municipal wells. This treatment system consists of an airstripping tower equipped with granular activated carbon treatment for off-gas emissions. System has been designed to reduce the levels of site-specific contaminants found in any of the municipal wells to non-detectable levels. Treatment system was put online in June nineteen ninety-two following a fifteen-day demonstration period where water is routed into the Fulton water supply system. Additional work that was performed subsequent to the RI report also includes additional drilling and monitoring well installation. Two additional monitoring wells were installed and eight soil boring were completed. Additional soil gas and soil sampling was performed in several areas across the site. There was also a recovery well flow rate increase pilot test performed at recovery well RW-one and RW-three. Recovery well one is over here. Recovery well three is over here. Most prevalent contamination found at the site includes volatile organic compounds, trichloroethylene, tetrachloroethylene, trichloroethylene, dichloroethylene, and dichloroethylene. Additional compounds detected at the site include benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, xylanes, and several ketones. Ketones are primarily found in the southern source area, near the UST area. These compounds contain the common industrial solvents which have been used in the past at the site, which are no longer in use there. Groundwater contamination plume has been delineated in the northern area, extending from the former southern containment tank and the former northern drum storage area, joining a contaminant plume emanating from east of the Taylor property before migrating into the M-two area. This will be shown. This is the storage area of the northern drum storage area. Spill containment tank area. I realize it's very dark. The blue contours represent volatile organic compounds which are found in the shallow groundwater zone. The red contours indicate those found in deeper groundwater. The southern groundwater contaminant plume has been delineated in the area south of the can plant. This plume is confined to a relatively small area due to low horizontal hydraulic conductivity. Southern groundwater contaminant plume is shown down here. Again, with the blue contours representing the shallow groundwater zone and the red ones representing the deeper groundwater zone. Contaminated soil areas have been identified in the northern drum storage area, spill containment tank area, below the southwestern portion of the can plant, in the underground storage tank area, and in the former drum storage area. These show the contaminated soil areas within the northern drum storage area, spill containment tank area, east of the Taylor property, and in the southern source area. Primarily immediately in the vicinity of the underground storage tank and the former southern drum storage area. An aquifer unit is defined as an area of contamination which requires cleanup based on established standards, criteria, and guidelines. Two aquifer unit groundwater areas have been identified through the RI. The northern aquifer unit groundwater, which extends from the former northern drum storage area and the former spill containment tank area, across the site encompassing contamination emanating from the east of the Taylor property and extending into the M-two, K-two area. The southern aquifer groundwater unit is located below the southwestern portion of the can plant and south, southwest of the sewer plant. The northern aquifer unit groundwater and the southern aquifer unit groundwater. Soil requirement remediation at the can plant site is limited to an area below the southwestern portion of the plant in the immediate vicinity of the USTs. This is the southern aquifer groundwater unit. I'm sorry, the southern aquifer unit soil. This is shown by this area right in here. As I mentioned some earlier, the results of the municipal aquifer study indicate that there's a relatively low groundwater seepage velocity from the M-two, K-two area toward K-one when both systems are operating. The Oswego River acts as a constant source of recharge. Approximately sixty percent of the water entering K-one is derived from the river and approximately seventy-five percent of the water entering the K-two, M-two area is derived from the Oswego River. Results from the recovery well flow rate increase indicate that when the maximum pumping rate supported by recovery well one has not created sufficient expansion of the cone of influence in that recovery well to capture groundwater contamination which is observed more than recovery well one. Contamination which appears to be beyond the capture zone of RW-one is addressed in the selected remedial alternative presented in the FS. K-two and M-two are down in this area. K-two and M-two are located down here. K-one is located over here. I'd like to introduce Dave Knutson. He'll present a summary of the feasibility study.
Hey, as Kelly just discussed, she, Kelly discussed the remedial investigation which is to find the areas requiring remediation. And with the feasibility study, we look at different options for cleaning up those areas and decide which one is most feasible. There's quite a few steps involved in the feasibility study. First, you define aquifer units, northern areas which require remediation, the L-one. And then you have to find the clean-up goals that we need for the contaminated media. And then develop general response actions, which are broad classes of technologies like no action or containment, just contain waste. And then the way to do it is break them, to identify specific technologies, break the response action. And then you spring those technologies and then combine them into alternatives to address the each contaminated media. And then you spring those alternatives and then combine those and combine those to address the entire site, both inundate groundwater and soil. And it aligns those alternatives to deal with. And then based on that, you recommend the most feasible alternative which, like, you know. As you can see, there's quite a few steps involved. So as you can see, there's quite a few steps involved. I'll just review what Kelly looked up. There's basically two operable units at the site. The southern operable unit we've got contaminated soil and groundwater that needs to be cleaned up. And in the northern operable unit, we've got groundwater that needs to be cleaned up. So this shows the southern operable unit soil location which is below the can plant. And then as Kelly showed, we've got the two operable unit groundwater locations, the northern operable unit and the southern. You know, I'll just go through the F S process as we, as it came to the can plant. Once the operable units were established, then we looked at the cleanup objectives. For the soil, we had the goal was to prevent unacceptable risks and also to prevent groundwater standards with bringing levels down low enough so that the soil will bleach contaminants into the groundwater and exceed the groundwater standards. And the goals for cleanup of groundwater were to reduce levels to state federal standards like the drinking water standards and as well as the groundwater standards. And also our goal was to minimize migration off-site. Once that was done, we defined general response actions. These are broad classes of technologies that we looked at. Basically, no action, institutional actions which are, which is limited action, like putting up a fence around an area so that no one can come up to contact it. Excavation, treatment, and disposal, in-place treatment, which involves treating contaminated soil or groundwater without having to withdraw or excavate, excavate the soil to contain it, which means just to contain the waste where it is. Once we did that, we identified technologies, screened those technologies, and then we came up with alternatives. Came up with nine alternatives for, for the soil in the southern operable unit. We looked at no action, which is required as part of the regulations, as based on institutional actions which are limited actions such as fencing an area, fencing an area like we have mentioned. And we looked at excavation with the three different disposal options, excavating the soil and disposing of that off-site. And we also looked at excavation with onsite treatment and then backfilling excavation at the end point. And then excavation with treatment and off-site disposal. And then these last four alternatives are in-place treatment alternatives that we looked at. Vapor extraction involves installing wells in the soil and sucking out air in that drain that takes out all the contaminants from the vapor base. And then that air, contaminated air is treated before it turns into the atmosphere. And we also looked at fiber radiation which involves injecting nutrients, oxygen into the subsurface and helps bacteria break down contaminants. We also looked at soil flushing which involves just flushing water into the soils to wash the contaminants from the soils and then that water is captured and treated and discharged. And we also looked at steam injection which involves injecting steam into the soil to vaporize contaminants and those taken out of it. Now for the groundwater, we looked again at no action and limited action alternatives. And we also looked at extraction and treatment options. For instance, in the northern operable unit, we looked at using the existing system, looking at three recovery wells and just increasing the plume. And we also looked at extraction treatment with fire remediation of the groundwater and with air sparge which where you actually install wells and then inject air into the groundwater beneath the ground and then that air strips out the contaminants. Now these alternatives were screened on the basis of their effectiveness and implementability. And then they were combined into alternatives to address the entire site, both the contaminated groundwater and soil. And so what we came up with were five combined alternatives that looked at cleaning up both the soil and groundwater at the site. The first one, which I'm here is number five, with no action alternative. Even though that wasn't very feasible, we still had to include that because that's included, that's quite a lot of regulations. And then we looked at groundwater extraction treatment discharge with four different options for the soil. Again, they're all the in-place treatment alternatives, vapor extraction, soil flushing, fiber remediation, and air sparge effective extraction. And with the air sparge, we inject air into groundwater and then you've got to collect that with the, through the vacuum, which are installed in the soil. So that treats both soil and groundwater. So what we did was we, these five alternatives, we analyzed with respect to these criteria and entered into these criteria. Again, it's compliance with the existing standards, the guidelines, protection of clean up requirements, short-term and long-term effectiveness. Short-term is during construction and until the cleanup goals are met. And long-term effectiveness looks at how effective the remedy is and once the cleanup objective is met. And how well that alternative reduces toxicity, mobility, and volume of contamination, and how implementable it is. And then the last factor is cost. And the cost is looked at once that one of the other alternatives are tried. Now what we found through conducting the feasibility study was that groundwater extraction treatment discharge with vapor extraction treatment of the soil in the southern operable unit was the most feasible alternative. We've done some plume modeling for the groundwater recovery system and we found that probably thirteen recovery wells across the site would be necessary to contain and capture the groundwater and groundwater contaminants. We also looked at different ways to treat the groundwater once it was extracted. And airstripping with carbon, both the air and water applicants, looks like would be the most feasible. So the modeling that we have done indicated that we might have a problem with some of the contaminants that are coming out of the airstripper in this space. That's why we needed the carbon out of both the air and groundwater is to make sure that everything being discharged falls below the discharge limits. And we also looked at different discharge options and it looks like the most feasible is to go to the Oswego River with the clean water. With vapor extraction, we would be actually using some of the existing wells inside the can plant as better extraction wells. Again, this is pretty hard to see. This is a conceptual layout of what the system will look like. We've got thirteen recovery wells. There's three right here to cut off the contamination originating from the site. There's three there, one, one there, that's five, and then there's one there, 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 and then there's two inside. And the two inside are existing wells which we would also use as backup extraction wells to remove contaminated vapors from the subsurface in the soil. And in the conceptual design, we would have one treatment facility which we located right at the southern side of the can plant. And from here, the water would be discharged out to the river. So I guess that's about it. Kelly, again, just to summarize everything, Kelly went through the activities that were conducted at the site to determine the extent of contamination. And I just went through the process where we determined which action to implement to clean up the site. And again, it's groundwater extraction treatment discharge with vapor extraction treatment. I guess we're there. Let's go back to Mike DeGatro.
I'm Mike DeGatro. I'm the P E C project manager at this site. Basically, what you've heard to this point, and I'm going to do just a recap, is the process by which we come up with a solution that has this way site. And I'm just going to go basically into the elements of the remedy significantly would aid and just indicate. One, the remedial media at the can plant site and the elements of the remedy that we presented here are groundwater collection system, these thirteen wells, this would collect groundwater down gradient from the spill area and reduce down gradient migration treatment system which reduces contamination levels acceptable to acceptable surface discharge. Another critical aspect is we monitor groundwater to assess the effectiveness of the system. With regard to soil contamination, the one area of soil contamination that was in excess of standards is in the southern source area. Vapor extraction system will be installed there in order to remove the contamination of the soil. And they go into the remedy, the remedial action plan. It is a monitoring process which will ascertain the effectiveness of the system. There, in this case, a major complicating factor at the site is, of course, the presence of old municipal wealth being upgraded to the site. This was a major concern for us. And operating the treatment system that was constructed in nineteen ninety-two and nineteen ninety-three, which treats the water and eliminates site-related contaminants, the levels that are non-detectable, is also a focus part of this remedy. When we, as I said, when we looked at the remedy in addition to the usual protection of chemical element requirement, meeting S C J's, we had site-specific goals here. Protection of the public water supply, which we have achieved with the use of the airstrip groundwater system. Control and capture groundwater contamination. Illumination of the contaminant source, that is primarily the southern source area. We also have significant groundwater contamination under the northern part of the building. That appears to primarily be in groundwater and we're going to be pumping that and treating. The southern area will be treating soil as well as groundwater. Treasonably extract the contaminants in the southern portion because it's we can remove, we can concentrate the contamination, we can remove it. What we're doing here is capturing it through carbon filtration instead of discharging particles to the air that pass through carbon units to collect them. And finally, the most critical part is confirmation that the remedy is effective. This is, again, a primary requirement of the remedial action plan at the site. Recap, we have the groundwater collection system at the site, groundwater treatment system, vapor extraction system to treat contaminated soil, monitor it for all of these. And then a series of steps, chemical and groundwater level analysis to determine that the system is operating properly. The final element of the remedy is the existing groundwater treatment system, or rather, public water treatment system. And that's what protects the actual public drinking water system. What we'd like to do now, this is, I don't know if we touched on earlier, but really has been discussed, is we have to open this to your comments and your questions because before this remedy becomes final, we have to take into consideration the comments received in public at this meeting and in writing through the end of the month. The documents which we've discussed here are available at the Fulton library, D E C headquarters at Route seven, and D E C in Albany. So if anyone has any comments and questions at the start.
Has the town got much communication that was in town, Baltimore, when it was located?
I have contacted the county supervisor of Baltimore and sent documents such as the motion media action plan and
Trying to find the whole Fulton library.
Well, when they, yeah, we really want to set up a document repository, a location is selected that's as near the site itself as possible. Good thing the town of Baltimore, really, has to be, just primarily accessibility is the concern.
Oh, I'm concerned because I like to talk about this and I think it's important that our concerns be addressed also. I just wondered because I haven't seen too many documents out of the town hall. And I really should be dealing with town of Baltimore also.
I think, I'm sorry, John.
Of course, most of yous know me, but of course my direct concerns are with the water supply. When I talk about the water supply, I talk about both qualitatively and quantitatively. And qualitatively, my feeling is we've, it's been pretty adequately addressed thus far with the new treatment facility that we have on-site, Water Works, and the airstripping. Currently, we have levels of the influence, approximately five parts per billion, and the system was designed to treat levels up to hundred eighty-something, is that correct, something like that? So I think that, you know, those numbers that I just mentioned there, speak a little bit of where I'm coming from when I say I'm satisfied, you know, qualitative vantage point. So I guess tonight I'd just like to address the other thing. I know I've spoken previously with Ron Hertz from Health Department, and then at A W W seminar, I talked to Mark a little bit on the quantitative concerns. Then two days ago, I think, with you, Mike, I mentioned it a little bit. I guess tonight I'd just like to hear some responses on how this was taken into part of your plan or whatever, just so that, I know you're talking about thirteen wells, ten to twenty gallons a minute, which comes out to a hundred thirty to two hundred and sixty gallons a minute. I just want to see our quantities be reduced over at the Water Works.
Well, the pump test, which was Well, the pump test, which was run on the, you know, the full wells, on the three primary wells you have over there, indicated a significant contribution from the side of the well field on the river. There is obviously groundwater flow in that direction across the site, but a significant portion of the water pumped out of those wells comes, is, is influent from the river. The wells that will be installed closest to the municipal well field, the extraction wells, are on a buried till ridge which runs roughly on the north-south axis across the site. This allows us to pump slightly more, less water and achieve a higher influence because there's less of a saturated thickness of the aquifer there. There should be no significant impact, certainly nothing noticeable, on the quantity of water you could produce from that well field because of these upgraded wells. It should be far enough away that they won't be directly impacted. That would be something we could look into during the remedial design and see how any changes might occur in your production wells. Certainly a concern that should be addressed.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I would, I would expect that if, if we were quantitatively affected, that, you know, somehow the city would be reimbursed for those losses similarly to what happened at the past. And just to refresh everybody's memory a little bit, also on that, I think we'd all have to agree that the pump tests, that was the results that came out of it would only be good for those particular conditions at that particular time. If it was run during time of the year, month of August, where groundwater levels ordinarily would be diminished, and anything that would distort things a little bit from what might happen when the groundwater levels were higher, for instance, in the spring after the snow runoffs and whatnot.
Bob West in the city of Fulton. I just wanted the agencies to know that the city is extremely concerned about their water supply. And then we have Alderman Covellaro, Alderman Allen, Alderman Trowbridge, and the mayor, Don Bullard, in the front row there, and also the superintendent of the Water Works, John Florke, who just spoke to you. So I just want you to know that we're concerned for the water supply.
I really stand up because I don't want to attack my remarks to each of you. My name is Don Bullard, and I'm the mayor. Mr. Driscoll, you're the regional director.
No, not regional director, it's regional, so it's a participation specialist.
Anything was impacted by this was the same. The documents that I received in my office, I heard about this meeting, one meeting, I think it was last week. Documents that I received in my office concerning this meeting seem like Wednesday or Thursday or last week. I think it's good that we're all here to talk. I hear the type of hospital environment, but I think we have more at stake than this bill, the older recovery company, the older age population. And certainly that modest document that we received is not part of the entire plan. I don't believe that we should have to chase all over Fulton County, to the library, to the county amount of drugs that we're trying out in the county. We haven't had time to read those documents. But I had concerns over the quantity of water that you're going to be pumping out of the ground and how it relates to the city of the supply. And I hope all of you are taking notes. I don't see a stenographer, so I hope you're writing what I said. But admittedly, a lot of the water allegedly comes from the Oswego River, but the number I kept hearing to run around was sixty percent to Keller One of the Oswego River, and seventy-nine percent to Keller Two. That somehow leaves a balance of forty percent of the water coming from somewhere else to Keller One, and eighty-five percent to Keller Two. The point I'm making is, as Mr. Florke agreed, there could be a substantial amount of water, a substantial impact on our water supply. We measure our water supply from those wells, and I want the record to show that should that quantity be impacted, we intend to be compensating for it. So there are two points. We could be motivated more time we receive the full participation, but we would appreciate, we appreciate the collaboration we have with the local folks. Number two, I guess the thrust of my conversation is saying is water quality. You guys are going to take care of the ball, and we'll be, we'll be watching. Thank you.
Yeah, I was curious about quantity also. Has, has there been some thought given about reinjecting the treated water back into the aquifer rather than discharging to the, to the Oswego River?
That was looking to, but there are a number of problems with that. Some kind of reapplication scheme might have been possible, but it really was screened out of the process, both for administrative reasons or concerns wherever we reapply water or re-inject water into the source area, potentially increasing mobility of contaminants. And also, there's physical constraints in that you'd reapply normally back into areas of higher contamination, which in this case were also areas with lower conductivity, so we're seeing permeability, so we're seeing down gradient. So we'd only be able to reintroduce a small fraction of, of the water, and the complications that would be added is deemed impractical for
The problem that, uh, the treatment of, of the extracted groundwater with the carbon filtration.
Sorry, but airstripping and carbon filtration, polishing to remove some of the
Quality of that water going to be similar to the quality that's obtained by the stripper that's going to be at the municipal well field, that's operating in the municipal well field?
Uh, the stripper on the municipal well field is currently going to below current detection limits for these compounds. This system will have to meet a speedies discharge requirement.
Oh, yeah.
It will meet at least the, be no less stringent than the standards that are in the current consent order for the, for the municipal wells, in the event they had to be discharged to the river. There's, it, it will be stringent, and it'll be number developed based on contaminant levels and loadings.
So the, the, uh, protecting relative to the discharges from those
The discharge rates and recovery levels from the concentrations. And, and the river class bases, of course, too.
I was curious about, there, there's a mention of two operable units. That is, the northern operable unit, the southern one. How does the Taylor property fit to all of this? I mean, there's, there's contaminated soils there, I guess, right?
There is shallow groundwater contamination located between the boundary of the Taylor property and the can plant. If you visualize it on the map, it would be to the right of the Taylor property. Yeah.
Yeah. It'd be essentially east of the Taylor property.
Just east of the Taylor property is the indicated area.
Where do they come from, probably?
There's a shallow, there's a shallow well there that is, through the process, has shown anomalously high contamination levels. It don't nicely fit the pattern. Now, the aquifer is fairly complicated across the site. It's, it's possibly a cutoff portion of the existing plume. It could be some very localized shallow contamination. But the point is that no soil was found there that had contaminant levels that could be considered a source, you know. But our soil numbers, our soil guidances that we use, our values generally protective of groundwater. They're based on that and protection we know.
Was there some limits of, of the contaminated sediments found beneath the Taylor property? Or no?
There was a removal of a septic tank under the Taylor property. That was a few years back. But that removal was conducted.
The problem at the Taylor property, there was actually a petroleum spill investigation or remediation carried out there, but those particular contaminants are not the same and, and don't really show up in the public water supply well. As, as Mike was saying, it's, it's not clear precisely where that material just east of Taylor did come from, but looking at the results from some of the test wells in that immediate area, the water quality there did change over time. I don't think it was a situation like fourteen D, for example, where the well was drilled and water quality was found to be, you know, at, at some level of contamination that was very significant, that changed over time, as shown by the monitoring program.
So another, one other question, Mike.
Probably onsite fuel storage for the ferment that was big on the Taylor property. Probably an onsite fuel tank for the Taylor property.
Well, the type of material that was found, maybe Mike can explain this better than I can, but the type of material that was found east of the Taylor property is not fuel. It's the industrial solvents that we see at the original spill site, or a fraction of them. Trichlorethylene is not a fuel.
There was, there were some, there were some gasoline-type, weather gasoline-type components that had been found in soil there, and a problem was, as you say, fuel storage for pharma implements. But the, some of these other contaminants that are there are more, more typical of what we're seeing across the site.
I'm sorry, Ron.
Well, I was, Ron and I, Ron Hurkis and I were talking earlier about, and it's mentioned in this document that I got, relative to this, to the trap, the proposed remedial action plan. It's mentioned there that there, there's some concern of the contaminated soils not matching the level of contamination that's seen in the groundwater, number one, and that this could be possibly due to what was called these tinapples or dense non-eigish phase liquids that, that might be there. And I'm sure you thought about it, but I'm just kind of curious about whether or not it's feasible in, in this realm of, of scheme of things to try to go after those tinapples in order to remove significant source of, of long-term contaminants to the groundwater resources. And then as a follow-up to that, if you, if that's not going to happen, let's say, if you're not able to go in there and do this for whatever reason, and there was some mention that some of this stuff might in fact be under some of the buildings, which would make it obviously very difficult to get out. And what is the projected term of remediation that is probably going to occur on the site before we start seeing groundwater contaminant concentrations reaching some fairly, fairly low enough concentrations where you can kind of terminate the process? How long is it going to go on?
As to the duration of the system, that's unknown. I wouldn't, I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't venture a guess. That's why we're, this proposal goes in with the acknowledging that we're monitoring is going to be a critical part of it. And if we see changes, we have to adjust to them. For example, if putting in a recovery well, you were to hit an apple, which would be extremely lucky, then modifications would be made as appropriate to, to treat that and separate it. The likelihood of our finding a, a napal there, assuming there was one, okay. There is a possibility that there are small pockets of napal that would, that would explain some of the contamination in the northern area where we can't find a soil source. But considering a hundred-plus wells were put in across the site, and we're unable to find any napal saturation other than under the southern corner of the tank, which we're addressing that soil and that contamination with vapor extraction, we really
I think it's fair to say, and if I'm nuts, tell me that I am, but I think it's fair to say that we're probably looking at decades, probably than years now.
It's going to be several years, at a minimum, probably tens of years of, of operation of the system.
Kind of a level whereby you can see reductions.
Level would be, yeah, acceptable to me.
My name is Mark Waller, I just wanted to, I work for Alvin Turney. I just wanted to touch base a little bit on this other question about the source east of the Taylor property. When we first started the process of investigating the sources at the site, we looked at virtually every alternative we could think of. There was a former power relay station for the old Oswego Syracuse trolley line that was actually on the Taylor property. An old aerial photograph showing a brick building that had a railroad spur that came off around the building. And we thought, well, maybe that, the location is just east of the Taylor property, near the fork in the road where the two can plant entrances meet. And we looked at that as a potential alternative for some of the types of solvents we detected because of degreasing operations or whatever from the power relay station. We're not able, in any, any event, all the investigations that we've done, and some of these were done after the R I was concluded, because we couldn't really come up with a, a reasonable alternative to suggest what was causing the contamination in a couple of those shallow wells. We went back and invested a lot more time and effort into trying to find some answers. And I think the, the bottom line with this was that we were spending a lot of time trying to find an answer about what was causing it, rather than addressing what, what the actual contamination was, and where it was, and how to get it out of the ground. I think we made a combined decision at that point to spend our time or concentrate our efforts from then on to just to, to get the groundwater contamination out of the ground. Soil contamination really wasn't a major issue at all. And rather than chase the source, we couldn't find a point source. It may have been operations that took place in the farm for years, who knows? I mean, this place operated for decades. I'm not even going to suggest alternatives. We looked at all sorts of things and weren't really able to find any answers. As far as the de enables question is concerned, I mean, that's obviously something that we have to look at, and we have been seeing, seeing seasonal fluctuations in groundwater contaminant levels, which would indicate some kind of a source that might be impacted as water levels increase or decrease. And the, the, the objective, I think, for groundwater remedy is to address all the groundwater contamination that's in the defined operable units. By doing that, we will be targeting also the areas where the tinapples may exist. So I think that we may see actually higher groundwater contaminant levels when we turn the system on. That's what we saw when the first system was started up. We designed it for a certain level of contamination. Then we put in a safety factor, the twenty G P M stripper. We basically doubled the, the level of contaminants we thought we might get. And it's a good thing we did, because when we turned the system on, we got, instead of tens of thousands, the total P O Cs, we got upwards of a hundred thousand. So, I mean, the system was able to actually treat what we had found, and we will be introducing the same kinds of safety factors in this system's design, so that when we start it up, we'll be on safe ground, I think, with, with the cleanup levels.
I lost the, my thought there when you were answering Ron's question about discharging materials, and you said that this discharge limits would be set by the state standards. What was that?
Yeah, that's discharge of water to surface water to the Oswego River. Yeah, they would have to meet criteria set by the division of water, and that's calculated on a case-by-case basis. There's some, you know, basic guidance, and then they fine-tune it to meet all
In any case, then, if it's that or, or discharging anywhere else, it seems to me that this project, I would think this project has shown that it's very practical to achieve non-detectable limits. So I would think that we could take and should take advantage of that and use that criteria in all cases.
Well, I can't speak further, again, the division of water and the people who issue speedies permits. However, one of the reasons that non-detect current standards now However, one of the reasons that non-detect, current standards, non-detect, was achieved in the municipal treatment system is that the levels that far down are relatively dilute. We're not seeing contaminants there anywhere near the magnitude of the source areas. And you get a, say, for the sake of argument, a 99% removal efficiency on a given compound with a, with a system. If you're only getting inputted 40 parts per million, then that's going to be non-detect when, when it goes through that 99% reduction. However, when you're inputting at several hundreds of parts per million rather than billion, you're going to get detectable levels.
Sometimes 99% is impressive, what is impressive is what actually comes out. Just to say it's 99%, you know, removed, disregards the magnitude of the discharge level. I have another question. Why is it that on the southern plume, the soils were contaminated and not in the northern plume? And what caused that?
Well, there were, at one time, there were probably significantly contaminated soils in the northern area also. However, that tank was outside the building and it was excavated and removed and the soils were removed. That was in 1986, 87, very early on, before we actually started the RI. In the southern area, what the source is, is primarily process tanks, these tanks that were used during the operation of the plant. And these tanks, in one way or another, leaked to the environment, to the soil. And it was concentrated in, under the footings of the plant. And it's very, very confined, so we're finding soil that has high levels of contamination there. And it would be extremely infeasible to go in and try to remove it in the way that the tanks that were external to the plant were removed and just go in and dig up the, you know, the contaminated soil. That's why we're looking at the vapor extraction as a soil treatment because it seems to be the most effective way to reach out under the plant without having to actually tear up the building itself. With vapor extraction, you can get wider influence and that, again, will be, will be checked with vapor monitoring wells.
I got the impression on one of the maps that the contaminated soils were away from the building?
There, there were some contaminated soils away from the building, however, those were lower levels. The ones that were above, originally a drum washing or drum, drum storage area at the edge of the park. Those are probably shallower, shallower and lower level contaminations. The ones that are at their worst under that southern corner, the one that's driving the remediation, are completely under the plant, difficult to access. That's why when they installed, when Mountain Purney installed the two wells that are now projected to be vapor extraction and groundwater pumping wells, they designed them not just as two-inch monitoring wells, but larger diameter because there's a lot of difficulty getting into the building there. And it was thought, it turned out to be a good idea to go in and install those so they could have dual purposes rather than have to immobilize and forground all the operating equipment in the plant.
Would that have to be additional air stripping units constructed on-site, brought on-site?
Yeah. This, this system would have to be, I think, from the ground up. It's got to be designed to handle higher, higher levels than we were saying. It's going to be handling a lot more volume than the current small onsite air stripper is, is doing. So that will have to, will have to be designed and remedial design remedial action.
Hi, Candy Trailbridge, I'm in Alderman, the city of Fulton. Since the report just came out and we would like to have the time to study a little bit, could the comment period be extended until after the first of the year, being it's not time for it to come out and it's Christmas time and, you know, busy time of the year? I wondered if you would consider an extension, the comment period, for the, for the people's sake and it's going to be on our public access television?
Not sure exactly what the...
Would you like to postpone it? About January 15th?
What?
January 15th.
Would that be feasible? I mean, you know, it is a really busy time of the year and we'd like to take the time with that.
Get past the holidays and give everyone a chance to...
Yeah, Volney has some concerns and these, you know, once they see it on television, then it would give them time to get the material and read the material and comment on it. So just to get everyone's comment on record.
Yeah. Thank you.
Along those same lines, for a project that started in 1990, and then when the final, when you remediation comes out and the public is asked to comment, should there be a more reasonable length of time for that period? You know, like 60 days, something like that, rather than two weeks?
Actually, the majority of the documents were put in the document repository as they were developed, as they were generated. And I know there was a, there have been significant outreaches by the, by the Department of Health and the Department of Health in conjunction with our CP people to, you know, keep people informed that, on what kind of activities were going on at the Miller site. And this was done in conjunction with other sites around the area. You know, it's always, it's always tempting to try to expand the timeframe, but at the same time, we'd like to attempt to institute a remedy that will be effective and we know that inevitably there are...
Again, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it would be helpful if something came, if the complete set of documents came in the city of Fulton.
The 30-day comment period is something established by regulation.
I got that.
And our typical process is to begin the comment period and then a week or two into the comment period, hold a meeting such as this to explain it to people face-to-face. And they will still have two or three weeks to submit any comments. If there are concerns as, as tonight, and people want to extend that comment period, then we can do that. We just did it to extend it to 45 days and we can go farther than that if necessary. The other thing that we can do is, we are available as resources so that you don't have to plow through the entire, you know, FEDA documents. We're available for you to call us or write us, ask us some specific questions. We can, we can do some of the legwork involved tracking down some of those answers for you. We can provide, provide you with full sets of the reports, provide them to your consultants yourself, wherever you like. In other words, we're a resource so that you don't have to wade through all this stuff necessarily. You can go through it as much as you want. We've been involved with this for several years now. Perhaps we could, we can help you with particular questions that you might have. But the overall process is something that is set up by regulation and we can adjust that to fit your needs.
Thank you.
We have, you know, I'm interested, maybe at one point, it might be good to perhaps check with some of the city personnel. I think there was an effort made to share all the documents with the city over time and the remedial investigation, for example, in some of the previous documents. Certainly everything pertaining to the water supply treatment facility was shared with the city because the city was part and parcel of the negotiations for that particular interim remedial action. But, you know, if you don't have something, we'll get it.
I agree. Up to this portion of the, of the project, we did receive things. And when did you get the document?
I just got this today.
Because I realize he didn't have it, and that's all he got. Stuff was coming to our water officials and somehow we got out of the loop. You know, if it came into the mayor's office, I'm certainly not going to hold out documents like this. I'm going to find somebody to read them, right? You know? So, and I'm not always going to be mayor, but no mayor's going to want to hold out documents like this. They're going to say, what am I going to do with these? But there is a lot of data on this site too in terms of the, you know, the investigative reports that have been generated over time and the sampling data. There's, there's an awful lot of monitoring data from the monitoring wells on the site, recovery wells, and from the public water supply. I actually didn't realize until sometime today that the water vehicles are going to be seized in this, that that is my concern.
That's part of the reason for this process is that we're reporting dozens, if not hundreds of these meetings. Sometimes people want the information, sometimes they don't. So this provides us with an opportunity to find out who wants it and so we don't have to inundate people with the...
That's, that's...
Be glad to...
I would offer to meet with the, you know, with the city and the council anytime if there was any aspect of this that we wanted to discuss relative to the water supply.
You people just amaze me. You don't, you don't care about us people out in the town of Volney? I asked about some documents and said, well, we sent them to Howard. Well, and now you're offering to meet with the council, but Volney still doesn't matter, right? We're just the people that have the plant in our town that has a contamination. So how come all this cooperation with the city and you guys haven't offered to come out and meet with us or explain anything to us? If we want to read about it, we've got to go to the city library. And if we want copies, I mean, the library can't run for free. I'm sure we're going to have to pay for copies. You know, you, you people just amaze me. Because we live out in the country, we don't matter? I, I really think you better look at this and pretend that other people are important too. I'm really worried, I don't want the people in the city of Fulton to drink dirty water. I think that's very important. But also, the town of Volney is important too because we have the contamination in our town. So, you know, not that I don't want you to talk to the city because they don't need to get sick from contaminated water, but you need to talk to the town of Volney and act like they exist. Because that's where that plant is located. You, you guys just amaze me that you're just totally ignoring us and writing us off like we don't even matter.
If anything came across this, even to imply that we're, we're trying not to...
What department can I send it to? And when I stood up and asked how much communication you had with the town of Volney, he said that you had sent some papers to Howard, but that was about it, you know? And I said, why can't we have these documents out of the town of Volney? And he said, well, you know, we, we had to put them down here.
All this is theories to make the request. If someone needs particular information, copies of reports, we can, we can make that available.
Why would someone from the town of Volney have to request it? If you people are cleaning up a contaminated place in the town of Volney, why would we have to request copies of reports that you're doing on how you're cleaning it up? And how would you feel if you were me and we traded places for a minute? What would you think?
I think the, the most straightforward to deal with it is just to make the request and be glad to provide the information that you need. Our, our action was to provide documents to the town supervisor and then put out information to the public, hold this meeting, find out what additional information people need. This is the forum for getting that...
I would say the town of Volney needs all the information, seeing as the spill occurred in our town and we shouldn't have to ask for it any more than Fulton should have to ask for how you're fixing their water.
Well, we have provided the information to the town of Volney and we had a conversation with the town.
All the information?
We provided the information under the context that we'll provide this much, if more is needed, we'll be glad to provide it. We have not until now received that request. We'll be glad to honor the request.
Yeah, no. Standing last in the town to provide them the information they need to deal with the situation.
Our, our requirements are to let people know what actions are being proposed and then to respond to people's concerns. It's not possible for us to know beforehand what people will need to know, how much detail they need to know. So we're glad to...
You need to know what this conditions, what the situation is, what the conditions are and what you're proposing to do at that site.
That's fine.
The town hasn't been included. I contacted Mike and asked him if he please send documents to the town. Prior to that, they had nothing.
Well, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is that we'll be glad to provide whatever information that you need and provide any assistance you might need in trying to understand that information.
I live in the town of Volney and I want all the information. And I don't want to have to go to the public library and get it so that we have to use their copy machine and pay 25 cents a copy or whatever. Like I said, we can't expect them to provide that stuff for free, it costs money. I don't think we should have to go to another municipality to read about an incident that happened in our town and how you're going to take care of it.
That's fine. I understand your concern and be glad to provide you the information you need. Stop and see us after the meeting, give us your name and address and provide whatever information you need.
No, I, I think you should just send it to the town hall, whatever reports there are about it. I, you know, I don't know how clear it is to make my point that I'm making, that I can't believe that where the incident occurred, of course, you know, we have the so-grown landfill too, you know? So I guess that maybe it's just getting to be a place where people put their, their crap out there in the town of Volney and it doesn't matter. So, no, I think that you should just send all the documents about how you're making this better and what you did there at the site to make it better and how you're protecting our neighbors' water to the town of Volney because we're just as involved in this as the city of Fulton.
That's fine. No problem with that, we'll take care of it. No problem.
Yeah, we're going to need some time to go through all of this stuff too.
Added recovery wells that are going to be placed on site, will that in any way affect the gasoline plume that's being treated at the waterworks? It won't have any impact on that?
There's, there's sufficient spatial separation there that there shouldn't be any impact. And those, those two systems are both being monitored on an ongoing basis, so...
Any, any situation that has occurred that you would adjust it as?
Both would be impacted.
The discharge to our sanitary sewer system, is that going to be stopped?
I would think that once the, this, this system as proposed is up and running, yeah. I don't think there's any need for the, that existing discharge because that's going to be included in the, in the remedy here.
Do you have any thousands, hundreds of thousands of gallons of water that have been discharged to the sewage treatment plant via that?
To date, I couldn't give you an estimate off the top of my head. I could find out for you.
And as far as the recovery wells that you have in place, now, you have three recovery wells that have been operating for about five years without any carbon unit on it. Can you, do you have any idea maybe how many pounds of contaminants have been added, put into the air from the time the operation began until present? Could that be calculated too?
I suppose it could be. I would, again, another number I'd have to get for you, I don't have it.
Are you using the carbon unit on these other, on these, this new system is because there are going to be higher levels that will be recovered?
Both higher levels and higher volumes, concentration and volume of air discharge. Since, since there'll be more water treated, there'll be more air put through it, more contamination brought out of it. So, carbon on that seemed prudent even before doing the detailed calculations.
What was in that theory? You felt, I think we talked about that on the phone, you felt that it wasn't necessary, you probably weren't part of the process at that time, but you didn't feel it was necessary on the three recovery well system? Or they felt anyway that it wasn't necessary because it would kind of limit the amount of water that could be withdrawn and processed?
I don't know if it would limit the amount of water that would be withdrawn, but I believe calculations were done at the time that determined that the discharge on that was below air guide standards, so that would...
You made the air at that time though, didn't you?
Yes. Yes, and air probably was, was got there at the time. And the levels of discharge were below the standards set in the apartment.
Did the experiment cover all of... Will the permit cover all of those contaminants that were, that were released in the air? I mean, do they have standards for all those things that we admitted?
I don't know. I would have to have the list of contaminants in front of me and I don't, I would have to also look at the specifics of the permit.
That discharge proposal was reviewed by DEC's Division of Air for the original discharge system, or the original recovery system, I should say. And I, I think that data's already been made public, but that can be provided again.
That would be, that would be good.
Same kind of model was used in all three circumstances. Now, the first, the twenty GPM system, it was definitely below air guide regulations for the discharge. And the wastewater, for the waste, the water treatment facility for the city of Fulton, that also was below air guide discharge limits. And the third system that we just calculated for, the new system that will be constructed, it's marginal. It's in an area that may approach the air guide limitations. And consequently, we felt that it was better to be safe on this one and included. The same is, is true for the carbon on the water discharge. There are some compounds that aren't included in the other two areas that may not be thoroughly removed by the airstripping. So, the carbon is necessary for polishing the water.
Have you looked at any alternatives to airstripping and carbon absorption? Treatment of water and airstripping?
We, we looked at a rather large range of treatment alternatives for the water. Did you mean, I'm not sure I understood the whole question.
Alternative treatments to the, to the airstripping?
We looked at, at a large variety of different treatment alternatives, including just going through straight carbon type recovery system. Airstripping was the one that looked like it was the most reasonable, it would get the job done at a reasonable cost. Be implemented in the, it's proven technology. It will do the job.
Recovering carbon or is that, is the carbon being recovered or is it being incinerated?
The carbon will be regenerated on site.
On site? How?
It's a steam stripping type process.
And what happens to the volatiles that are stripped?
They're condensed and that will be hazardous. That will be a waste stream. You have to have, compounds have to go someplace. In this case, it's going to be recovered and it will be shipped off site.
Okay, also, I would, I would like to focus on the same thing Joe Allerton did. Joe, myself, former mayor Ronald Wood, we worked very hard to upgrade the quality or upgrade the classification of the Oswego River, particularly because it ran in front or it runs adjacent to our well field. And you're going to discharge upstream of our well field, of our, you know, our wells. So, that's important to us that if you're going to, if this is what you select to do, that you really take our needs into consideration in regards to protecting the quality of our wells, since you yourself said the wells are recharged by the river. So, I think it's really important that you recognize that.
Does anyone else have any questions right now that they can pick up?
Another question but a comment. I don't know if this goes to everybody in the front or to the librarian in the city of Fulton or... First, I went down and I attempted to read, I believe it's the RI books that are down there, three of them about that thick and written in very engineering language. And I have an engineering degree and had a hard time wading through a lot of it, including looking at the documents, the maps and things. I also found references to one of the first hearings. The notes from the first hearing made reference to several different handouts in maps that were in color that you could look at that defined the plumes. Those documents were missing. So, the first thing is that they're very hard to find in the library. They're shoved in a box somewhere in the library, told me. Librarian told me they were there somewhere. I'd have to find them. I found them. There are pieces missing. And when I did find them, they're very difficult to read. Maybe it's in all of our best interest if a, in the future, when these sort of documents come out, a ten page or, I don't want to put limits on, but a shortened version.
No, that's, it, to some extent, that's the purpose of forums like this is, you know, these people went through and over-stickered as much of the information as possible and put it in terms that are detailed enough to be accurate but not overwhelming. And then we try to follow up and get questions. And then it, maybe it focuses people in a particular areas they want to look into more deeply.
I think the documents that is the focus of tonight's meeting, the proposal for the Laxton Plant might fit that bill. It is about a ten page document. It summarizes the RI and the FS and the actual recommendation. That is also supposed to be in the library. We can provide you, I think, with a copy of that tonight. We probably have an extra copy here, but you can fly it to me. And if not, I'll get your name and address and send it to you.
If for any reason we feel either the town of Volney or the city of Fulton feel we need a little bit more time than January fifteen, when would it be prudent to notify you by like five days before that? If we really feel that there are some questions of our water commissioner or water superintendent felt they need more time, would it be wise for common council to...
This is, I would have to say as early as possible.
I just don't, you know, January fifteenth, you know, I, it might just be a date that's not feasible and I haven't talked to any of the people in the city. Or like they're, they're just getting the information. So, what would be the best way to do that? Call you?
Either, yeah, either verbally or, or in writing.
No, I mean, you know, it's not this big. I'm, I'm not talking three months. I'm just talking, you know, fifteenth. I don't want to put a date on.
I'd like to make maybe just one comment. One of the things that I've heard a number of times this evening is a concern about the municipal water supply and quantities that are going to be impacted. There are a great deal of thought played on, on that issue. And one of the reasons why the recovery well network that it proposed is in the place it was proposed is that we're trying to take advantage of some of the natural geology at the site that allows us to maximize our capture of the contaminated groundwater while minimizing any impacts on the quantities that may go into the public water supply. One of the issues we looked at quite a lot was how far to the west should the recovery well network go? You know, one answer would be all the way over so that we capture all of the plume. But if you look at the geology of the site, you'll find that there's an underground ridge, if you will, somewhat east of Route fifty-seven where we can place these recovery wells where the groundwater that we're concerned about is relatively shallow. That allows us to collect or to capture the plumes without having to pump a great deal of water, which we might if we move closer to the, to the municipal well field. So, that did receive quite a lot of attention and the modeling that has been done indicates that we will get captured without taking significant quantities away from the well field. The other comment that I'd like to make is regarding the D-napples. There, we feel that probably the, the potentially weakest point of the remedy is in that area. We did spend quite a lot of effort trying to identify where these materials might be because they, of course, will should govern our ability to clean up the aquifer. If there are some of these concentrated contaminants at the, at the bottom of the aquifer somewhere, they're going to be continuing to, to release materials into the water for a long period of time. So, we did put a lot of effort in trying to, to identify that and deal with it. And we even looked at a number of alternatives that would focus on that issue. What we have found is that after installing over a hundred monitoring wells at the site, we have been unable to identify these pockets. It's still possible that they exist and may be causing us trouble over the long run. But, but for now, we feel that this system that we're proposing is really quite ambitious because it not only tries to contain the contamination, but actually tries to clean up the aquifer itself.
I'm quite happy with regards to the number of monitoring wells you put in. How many of those monitoring wells were drilled specifically to identify D-napples?
Well, in, in most instances, we collected continuous samples.
I have another one I'd like to ask. I ask, I ask how many of them were drilled specifically to identify locations of D-napples?
We drilled, I would say, in all the sewer areas we put monitoring wells in to look for potential pockets. And we did soil gas surveys to help us try to isolate any areas that were hot spots. And we targeted those areas with continuous sampling to look for a non-aqueous phase type of fluid that would be maybe trapped on top of the clay layer or... What we found is that, you know, we're dealing primarily with an unsaturated, very unconfined typographer system. We drilled down to the top of a low, low permeability confining type layer. And in all cases, we looked for D-napples. I can't say how many exactly were designed to look in the sewer areas strictly for D-napples, but we had that in mind throughout the whole process.
What is the, at this time, you know, let's say, since the last series of wells have been drilled, I mean, have you got a better idea where they, they may reside, if you will? Or be located where you could go in and, and focus some drilling more specifically in areas that seem to be higher concentrations in terms of groundwater contaminants?
We, we have targeted those areas. We looked for, you familiar with how D-napples flow contrary to groundwater type flow patterns in a lot of cases? So, you could have a, a deposit of this material that's in a non-aqueous phase flowing contrary to groundwater flow into, along the top of a till ridge or into some low lying area. And the number of monitoring wells we put in isn't the total number of boreings that we're conducting on site. We conducted several other boreings specifically to look for these low, in these low lying areas to see if there were any kind types of deposits that would be non-aqueous phase liquids. I think to date, we have not found any, any interval that we can really pinpoint as saying, you know, here's a, here's a deposit we can target.
No areas that you could target? Areas that you could target?
Or remedy to say that we're going to look, we have the D-napples.
So, you're not, so as a part of the, the prep, I guess that's clear that these documents, although the D-napples are, are mentioned, but there's no mention of whether or not you're going to be targeting any future work to try to identify and remove them? Is that your thing?
Our, our premise is that we have identified plumes of groundwater contamination and that within, within those plume areas, it's the most likely area where any D-napples would exist because that's where the groundwater contaminants would be released. We're targeting, targeting the entire plume area. And what we're saying is if we find it's one of the recovery wells, let's say that we get concentrations that are inexplicably high compared to what we are planning on, we may come back in and the recovery system will have flexibility in it to allow extra recovery wells if, if needed to address that kind of problem.
So, there's not going to be any intent to locate the D-napples any, beyond what you've already known?
Right.
Okay.
What is this word? This? It's dense, it's non-aqueous phase liquid. It's a separate, like an oil phase floating on water would be a so-called L-napple or light napple. Dense phase napple or D-napple is a separate phase that sinks to the bottom of the water column. If there are no further questions, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. And we will be answering your questions. I think some of you would like to speak afterward and would like to discuss some of your issues and get some addresses so we can get information out as, as is part of this process. Again, thanks for coming out on what's a fairly busy evening.